We have a few seconds, but yes.
Hi, Kara Brown.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like we are on Good Afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to Order. Lots on the agenda today, so we'll start with item number one, Consent Agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving on to item number 2.1, a fireworks license for American promotional events.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of the fireworks license for American Promotional Events Incorporated, DBA TNT Fireworks Incorporated, 4003 Hilton Drive, Florence, Alabama, to sell fireworks in Walmart parking lot, 1720 West Ridge Road, New Ulm, for the period beginning June 21, 2023, ending July 6, 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number 2.2, Temporary On Sale Intoxicating Liquor License for Brown County Agricultural Society.
I'll offer a motion to approve the temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license to Brown County Ag Society to sell alcohol at the Brown County Free Fair, 1201 North State Street, for the period beginning August 9, 2023, and ending on August 13, 2023, subject to compliance with city and state rules.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2.3, Off-Site Raffles Gambling Permit, New Ulm Youth Wrestling.
I'll make the motion to approve the offer, the resolution approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for New Ulm Youth Wrestling to conduct off-site raffles gambling at the New Ulm Country Club, One Golf Drive, on Monday, July 17, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 2.4, Temporary On Sale Intoxicating Liquor Licenses for New Ulm Small Business Owners Group.
Make the motion to approve the issuance of five temporary on sale intoxicating liquor licenses for the New Ulm Small Business Owners Group, 20 North Minnesota Street, New Ulm, for a sip and shop event on Thursday, June 29, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
I'll second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I would just like to say this is a long time coming. Love seeing these types of things, so.
Absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's great, so, and great for our downtown businesses. Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 2.5, Liquor License and Tree Service License Renewals for 2023 and 2024.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of the following annual liquor license renewals and tree service license renewal for the period beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements. Off-sale 3.2% malt liquor license, Apple Green Midwest LLC, DBA Freedom Value Center, number 25627 North Minnesota Street, and Family Dollar DBA Family Dollar Store, number 32729, 1605 South Broadway Street, and tree license, Roots Up Tree Service LLC.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3.1, Summary of Business Conducted During Board and Commission Meetings.
I can start. We had a couple of different meetings this time around. New Brick had a meeting in the community regarding their future, things that they're working on. It was very impressive, did a nice job. I think the bottom line was that they hoped to open a data center of sort, I don't know if I'm saying the right, correct name, but really pushing for data-type jobs in our community. And so that was at the New Ulm Community Center. Just a few minutes ago before this meeting, we also had an audit meeting with PUC Board and kind of reviewed our last audit, which went fine. And the EDA, West Ridge Place, has got a name and construction has started and hope to be done in August with a hope of having some little tikes in there by fall. So we're working on the contract now. Kara and our city attorney are working on that. We have some revisions. We looked at the first draft, had some revisions that we wanted for, to tighten that up a little bit. We did find out that insurance is crazy expensive for this kind of facility. So we had our insurance representative at the meeting, and it's approximately $2,400 a year. It's just a really high amount. So we're talking about potentially lowering the rent just to help cover some of those costs, but we'll have more discussion about that in the future. So that's all I have.
There's going to be a comp plan review on Thursday afternoon. That's all I've got to add. Nothing new to report.
Okay. Mayor Becker?
I also attended that New Brick meeting and the audit meetings, and Counselor Schultz covered them very well. Thank you.
Yes, I would agree. Thank you. Okay. Item number 4.1, Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year Ended December 31, 2022.
Counselors, as Counselor Schultz pointed out, there was a meeting before this with ABDO, and they presented the results of the 2022 audit. High level, we had no issues of noncompliance, and we received an unmodified opinion, which is what we want. So with that said, I guess we just need you to accept the report.
Since I was there, I'll offer the motion to receive the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31 for the City of New Ulm and New Ulm Public Utilities, and thanks for the good work on Nicole and her staff's part for making that happen. Thank you.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving on to number five, 5.1, Old Business Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer.
Thank you, Madam President. City councilors, item before you today is we've received the federal grants for the improvement project at the airport this summer. That project, if you remember, consists of reconstruction of the parking lot and entrance road up at the airport, along with ADA improvements for the facility. We opened bids and awarded this contract contingent on receiving this grant, and that was awarded to OMG Midwest and Doing Businesses as Minnesota Paving and Materials in the amount of $99,808.05. So it'd be our recommendation that this grant be accepted. This grant covers 90% of the total project cost. There is an anticipated Minnesota or grant from the state that would cover an additional 5%. So the remaining 5% would be the city share of this project.
I like those 90%.
Those are good.
Yes, those are good grants.
I'll offer the resolution, Accept the Grant Offer for Airport Improvement Project, project number 3-27-0070-021-2023, at the New Ulm Municipal Airport, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the grant offer.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.2, Ordinance Number 2023-071, Second Consideration for Zoning. Mr. Nysley.
Good evening, Council President. Counselors, this is to conduct the second consideration of ordinance number 2023-071, amending Appendix A of the New Ulm City Code, the zoning ordinance of the City of New Ulm, and it affects setback requirements in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District and the specific standards applicable to auto-oriented businesses. Since the first reading, staff has not received any calls or correspondence from any of those business owners with regards to the ordinance. There have been no changes since the first consideration, and it's staff's intent to work with these businesses in the space of time between now and when the ordinance takes effect to go over the ordinance language and to work on site plans with those businesses.
Can you talk about that just a little bit more? Are you going to send out a letter to all of them, have them, then have a general meeting to talk about the requirements, or?
I think what actually I would like, what I would like to do or prefer to do would be, again, send out a letter to all of them. That's what we did in the past. But I think we should sit down with them individually because they each have their own unique circumstances for their individual businesses, so.
And Mr. Nysley, about how many businesses are we talking about here?
Around 30.
Around 30? Okay, so that's manageable.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
And what's the timeline?
Timeline?
Yeah.
As far as when this goes into effect. It goes into effect 30 days after it's published.
Should be in the next week or so.
Should be, yes.
And when did you say they had to have their site plans in? Is that after? I mean, or?
The site plans, they're not required to have that in when this ordinance goes into effect immediately. We will work with them. There's no timeline on when that site plan actually needs to be to us, but we want to work with them to get that done in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, all right. That's my question.
Thank you.
Well, for a motion to conduct the second considerization, ordinance number 2023-071, amending Appendix A of this New Ulm City Code, the zoning ordinance of the City of New Ulm, setback requirements in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District and specific standards applicable to auto-oriented businesses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.3, Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-072, Chapter 4, Business Regulation.
I'll offer a motion to conduct a second consideration and adopt the ordinance number 2023-073, amending Chapter 4, 4.52, Taxi Cabs to Allow Transportation. You're one, one ahead. Am I too far ahead here?
Point three.
Great.
Yeah.
Oh, Conduct Second Assessment and Adopt the Ordinance 2023-072, amending Chapter 4, Section 4.28 and Section 4.60 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm, relative to business regulation and the licensing of mechanical amusement devices and public saunas that we heard a lot about two weeks ago.
We did.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.4, Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-073, Chapter 4, Section 4.52, Taxi Cabs.
Well, since I read almost all of it, I'll do it again. I'll conduct, to conduct the second consideration and adopt ordinance number 2023.073, amending Chapter 4, Section 4.52, Taxi Cabs, to allow the transportation network companies, in which includes Uber, Lyft, anything like that, to operate in our city.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I would just like to put out there, if you know anyone that would like to do Uber and/or Lyft, I would have them sign up now. So by the time this goes into effect, they can come down and get their license. It's between a two- to four-week process to go through the Uber and Lyft setup, so if you know people.
You said two weeks ago, we have nobody at this point registered.
At this point that I know of, I don't know anyone, but there could be people that have already put in after the first consideration.
And you haven't heard anything to that.
No, there are people that are ready to do this. It's just, Chris is doing a great point by saying it's a process to get licensed. It's just they wanted to wait for this to get in before they even started it. So there are individuals waiting, so get on their list.
And then I believe we would be kind of promoting this and letting people know that this is an option now to sign up and that these rideshare services will be available for those if we can find people to do those rideshare services. So, so similar to the, so does this apply for DoorDash as well?
DoorDash is separate.
DoorDash is separate.
Delivering food.
Okay, not people?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, corporations are people, but who is a people? I don't know. Okay, so, yep, so you guys can look for more on that. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. All right, more good news. All right, item number 5.5, Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-074, Chapter 5, Liquor Licensing and Regulation.
I'll make the motion to conduct the second consideration of the adopt ordinance number 2023-074, amending Chapter 5, Section 5.03 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm, relative to business regulation and liquor licensing requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.6, Purchase a 2024 Rescue Truck for New Ulm Fire Department.
Actually, we'd like to pull that item at this point in time.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
And we'll bring it back at a later date.
Thank you.
Get that pre-stone a little bit.
That's what always happens.
Probably not, but we'll bring it back at a future date.
When it's ready, right? Okay, item number 6.1, Under New Business Memorandum of Agreement Between the City and AFSCME.
The next two items is you approved the Juneteenth holiday for both LES and ASME. This is just the resolution that goes with that memorandum of agreement.
I'll offer the resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the City of New Ulm and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ALF-CIO, amending Section 10.1, Designated Juneteenth as a Holiday.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I just, should it be ALF or is it AL?
ALF.
Oh, it is AL. Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.2, Memorandum of Agreement Between the City and LES.
I'll offer a resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the City of New Ulm and Law Enforcement Labor Services, amending Section 15.1 and 15.5, Designated Juneteenth as a Holiday.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 6.3, Attendance at the 2023 NLC City Summit.
I'm upset that I can't attend as well, but I just, scheduling didn't work out, but I will still make a motion to authorize Mayor Becker, Council President Becker, and City Manager Dalton to attend the 2023 National League of Cities, City Summit in Atlanta, Georgia, from November 16 to the 18, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I'm just really glad you're going. I get so much when I go to these conferences and pull, bring back so much stuff for staff and myself, just learning. And I like how they split things up, big cities, little cities, and, and so I'm glad you're going, and I'm sure you'll come back. We'll be waiting, anticipating this detailed report when you come back.
Well, and this is my first NLC event. I've spent a lot of time in Minnesota stuff, but I'm really looking forward to this as well, so thank you. All right, those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.4, Closure of North German Street for KNUJ Farmers Markets.
I'll offer the resolution to approve the closure of North German Street from First North to Third North Streets from 8 AM to 1 PM for the KNUJ Farmers Market on the following Saturdays, June 24, July 1, 8, 15, 22, 29, August 5, 12, 19, 26, September 2, 9, 16, 23, 30, and October 7 and 14.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I'm just curious if there was like any letters or anything that, or any calls or anything that we got on that?
No.
Nope, okay.
Not to this date.
Perfect.
Pretty wildly accepted.
Yep. All right, Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.5, Police Department Grant.
President Becker, members of the council, Dave Borker, Chief of Police for the City of New Ulm, just have a small grant here from the state of Minnesota regarding citywide tobacco check, and it's basically a reimbursement. Just something where we had planned on doing anyhow, had budgeted, had planned for it, but we're just trying to pursue some reimbursement options.
Are you still having difficulty trying to find folks to help with the buys?
We are. We really struggle with that. This year so far, it's, you know, fortunately, we have some people that have some interest in it, but it's, it's just kind of a little bit the labor shortage, trying to get it to work with people's schedules, and we're really trying to do a enforcement campaign this summer. So we thought that the education, because with, with this particular grant, there's, there's no penalty. It's, it's all education, and we had planned on doing that anyhow, because this, this summer, we're going to be doing a lot of enforcement with tobacco and, and with alcohol.
Okay. I'll go ahead and offer the motion to accept a grant from the state of Minnesota Department of Human Services for purposes of a citywide tobacco check, checks.
Second, and that's a resolution there. He said motion, so.
What's that?
You said motion, not resolution.
Uh, did I say that? A resolution, sorry.
Okay. Perfect. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.6, Appendix A of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association Bylaws.
Madam President, City Councilors, Joe Stad, I'm Secretary, New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association. Before you today, included within your packet, we had a actuary perform that we do every other year, and along with that actuary report, we had a benefit study conducted by VIA and Associates. As you can see with the study that's up on the board here is our current funding level. That's the current plan column, and that shows our, our association funding level at 130%. So we had numerous options explored for potential pension benefit increase, and ultimately, the association decided on the $1,000 increase to a benefit level of 6,750 per year of service. As you can see, that would lower our funding percentage to 115% funded. So the proposed, as stated, the proposed increase would bring our funding level down to 115%, but still well within our comfort level, being overly funded by that additional 15%. It should be noted that according to the 2021 Minnesota State Auditor Financial and Investment Report, that we are, our association is in the 97th percentile for a 20-year rate of return average at 8.4%. Our five-year average rate of return is 14.4%, and in 2021 alone, we are at 19.1%. So from a funding perspective, we feel that we are, the increase that we are proposing should not increase the city budget, as we are fully funded, overly funded, so that would not require an increase to the municipal contribution. Also, for your information, we included our association, our current benefit level, rates of return, and funding percentage with a number of other fire departments of our size, as far as member-wise and community size, as close as we could. We feel that this proposed increase would put us kind of well in line with our peers, and again, it kind of shows that our, our rate of return has been outperforming our peers, as has been shown in our audit reports the last many years. The benefit level is a major recruiting tool that the fire chief uses when recruiting, recruiting new talent, new firefighters, and it also helps retain our, our existing firefighters who may be reaching that age of retirement. Hopefully helps them stick on maybe an additional year or two. With that information, the association is asking you for the adoption of the proposed increase. Again, we are fully funded, and we feel that this would be an appropriate increase at this time and is warranted. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and then Fire Chief Monaco is here also for any additional questions you may have for him.
Can you briefly just talk about the, how we're doing staffing-wise with firefighters? Are we way behind? Are we right about where we should be?
President Becker, councilors, Paul Monaco, Fire Chief, we're, we're doing really well with staffing right now. Right now, we are at 42, which is what I consider fully staffed.
Oh, really?
We're, I think we have 13 per company with three chiefs, so.
It's just as important, as you said, to not only retain, but also to recruit. I mean, it's certainly, both of them are equally important.
Yeah, you know, the last five years or so, it's been, worked out pretty good. We're, you know, we lose a couple and we'll gain a couple, so. And I think if you look over the last 10 years of recruiting, that's kind of the way it's been. So if we can kind of keep that steady flow, we'll be pretty. steady flow, we'll be pretty.
You don't have a big wave of retirees coming.
Yeah, no, no big waves that we see, but you know, in five years, there's, you know, there's a big group that could go. So this, I think is a wonderful recruiting tool, so.
No, that's absolutely huge. I mean, that's, yeah, what matters to the people that do this work and these numbers aren't out of line. I mean, thank you for putting it together and giving us data of what other cities our size and companies your size are doing. I mean, it's, I think it's appropriate and a wonderful gesture for what they do, for what you all do. I'll go ahead and offer a resolution to revise Appendix A of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association bylaws, changing the pension benefit level to 6,750 per year of service for the active members of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association to become effective January 1st, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries.
Council, thank you on behalf of the association. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stadheim. Item number 6.7, New Ulm Fire Department Services for Flying Dutchman Motorcycle Hill Climb.
Since I sit closest to Counsel Christian, I'll offer the resolution to accept a $100 donation from the New Ulm Fire Department.
One up, one up again. One up again.
What's wrong with my system today?
I'll go ahead and finish it, Ted. Make a motion to authorize the New Ulm Fire Department Rescue Squad to provide services to the Flying Dutchman Motorcycle Club for their motorcycle hill climb Sunday, August 27th, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
This will be the last time this request comes. You know, I think it was last year and it was an oversight on my part that these requests would just be handled by the fire chief to approve because he knows if they can provide the service or not.
Perfect. All right. Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.8, Fire Department Donation.
Well, I like all the even ones. I'll offer the resolution to accept a $100 donation to the New Ulm Fire Department for Miss Crutch.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 6.9, Banking Services Continuation or Approval of Request for Proposal.
Counselors, this is something that you've asked us to do. This is a professional service. We are not required to go out for proposals or anything like that with these services. When we did it in 2018, we left room to possibly extend the agreement for another five years, which is what I'm recommending that we do. Citizens has agreed to continue to honor the terms that we have right now. My fear is if we go out for bid, we'll lose the interest rate that we have right now. Even though citizens have said they would keep it for now, I'm afraid if we go out for bid that they would lower it. The last time we went out for bid, the interest rate they offered was quite a bit higher than any of the other two bidders. So I don't want to lose that rate. And from what I've heard from other broker, from our investment brokers and everything, we are getting a very, very generous rate.
Well, there's something to say when you're used to how this bank, what they require and what you need to submit. But then you also want to like, what are the other possibilities out there? But you said we only got two?
There was only two other bidders last time.
Two other bidders. So we had three total?
Three total last time, yeah.
But I'm assuming the city has multiple accounts and are they all, are there other accounts at other banks or other banks?
No, everything is, Citizens has everything, yes, other than our investments that are with the different brokerage.
Okay.
We've been there for them for a long time or?
As long, longer than when I've been here, so more than 12 years.
Okay. I think, you know, it's taken the recommendation from the finance director. They've got a good business relationship and working. There's been no issues she's reported or anything. So I would support it likewise.
Sometimes there's that fairness issue we sometimes hear about. It's like, hey, what about us?
I have no doubt the other banks in town would offer just as good a quality of service as we're getting. I'm just, I don't want to lose that rate.
Right. That's what's important.
Well, and you think about the number of hours it takes to switch and to, you know, that, I mean, that's honestly something that you probably want to budget for. I mean, I'm just being honest. Like, there's a lot involved in, a lot involved in doing that as well.
It's a five-year?
It's five years, yep. I continue to support the finance director as well, and I would be in favor of extending the services.
Well, I'm not reading anymore since I keep screwing them up.
And I can't, so.
I'll take a shot at it here. I'll offer a motion to authorize the finance director to extend banking services with Citizens Bank to the City of New Ulm Public Utilities Commission Economic Development Authority and affiliated organizations for a five-year period commencing January 1, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Nicole, thank you for following up with our request and getting this information for us. We appreciate it. Item number 6.10, Park and Recreation Donations.
I'll offer a resolution to accept donations offered to the city of New Ulm through Park and Rec Department as outlined. We have a German Park bench for 1873 honoring Girl Scouts by Joan Krikova, a German Park paver, $200 honoring Barb Haroldson, Kathleen Becker, and Poker Buddies, Herman Monument Interpretive Center, $70.51 of the Emma Gebser Endowment Fund, Rec on the Goal Program, $5,040. This is the first two payments to the program, ISD 88, Riverside Park, a tree, $500 in memory of Robert Schwartz, pickleball net repair, an amount unknown from United Commercial Upholstery. That's very nice on their part. Bike trail bench, $2,700 in memory of Christine Kim, $200 for flowers from the Brown County Master Gardeners. And that is it.
I will second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 7.1, so adjourn first meeting in July due to Independence Day holiday.
I'll offer a motion to approve the adjournment to Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, 4:30 PM due to the first Tuesday in July being Independence Day, July 4th, 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
We, we're not required to have two meetings per month. We could skip one if we wanted to, correct?
I read through a lot of that stuff, but I don't know if it, off the top of my head, I don't know if it is.
I think in the charter, we do have two.
It probably would say that.
I mean, if there wasn't a lot on the agenda, I mean, sometimes there isn't right after a holiday, but.
I mean, I would still recommend having a meeting because hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, we should potentially be bringing Georgia Steering Committee's recommendation to council that day because we do.
All right, that's fine. I'm just curious.
Good question.
Okay, I, yeah, I think we should, we should do it. Yep, okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Sorry, I missed that. Okay, any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. We will move into a work session and our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 5th. Thank you.